Unfortunately, are a little laggy sometimes or disconnect us and so Smash Brothers unfortunately, we did fall in playoffs. We did have some issues connectivity wise wasn't in playoffs. We had some issues against Columbia City and unfortunately that kind of faltered us. But having TVs in our room would be nice just so we don't have to go out into and sometimes we had to get kicked out because they would do like a safety school, a school board safety meeting. So we're like, okay, guys, everyone go in here and just peek through the window until the teachers are all done. We do need consoles. Like I said, there are certain titles that we unfortunately can't offer unless we had access to these consoles for the kids. Things like, I guess seating, extra seating. I know we just have seating but like lounge chair seating for those TVs because we're probably going to have the TVs facing away from the computers. So we would have the consoles on the opposite side of the room. We're thinking of, we're looking at getting sponsors and stuff and so we were looking at getting a small mini TV to run like sponsorships and stuff if that was something that was allowed. If that was something we could offer as like an incentive for community and stuff to get involved with our program. And so those are all things. We want to do like LED lights if we're going to be really fancy and put LED strips like on so that when it's all dark in there and you see the glow of the computers and the glow of the lights and we can have our school colors like blue and yellow lights and stuff and make it look really nice ambience and stuff. Those are like the big things like Tommy or some other things, just basic peripherals like controllers to go with the consoles.
Well, so that leads me into the second question because having 25 ish people do this is awesome participation. But there's a lot of us that are older that are like, what's an esport? You know, why are we doing that at school? So can you explain, you know, the opportunities after school and like after high school and kind of, you know, there's a lot of things that are taught on athletic games or extracurriculars. So just.
Yeah, great question. Um, well Bryce, are you planning on playing in college? Did you get a offer for a scholarship or anything to go play for Huntington North?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So Huntington North right there, we had someone.
Huntington University.
Oh, Huntington University. Sorry. Sorry.
Cut that out.
So yeah, we, right now, we have opportunities for a lot of these kids. Just going to Ball State, the whole setup for Ball State, they had colleges from all over and like they can tell you, you could talk with so many colleges that had so many opportunities. There's the thing is, there's so many opportunities out there for esports right now. It's a growing, a huge like sport, like in college, in high school. The fact that you guys jumped on it was again amazing because like I said, the fact that we could also make a statement against Bluffton who's been doing this for like three years was just also a really cool opportunity because they were so helpful as well. You know, I keep dogging on them just because we got it because they're rivals, but they were so helpful and that's what's so amazing about this esports community is colleges are in on this. High schools want other high schools to get involved because they want it to be successful. Because at the end of the day, we're all teachers and we want these kids to have more opportunities to further their educational career that if some of them decided, maybe I will go to college because now I have like some extra money from playing games, which is amazing. I could go do college and play sport, you know, esport, video games, which I know for you guys were like, that's so crazy to me. Why are they offering money to go play a video game? But it's now the world we live in with like technology and stuff advancing. Esports is one of the biggest things for a lot of these kids to be able to participate in. And the thing is, like you think, are they just playing video games? They're building core skills. They are communicating. They are working and strategizing and figuring out how to overcome their opponent. They're displaying good sportsmanship. Like I said, hard work. I know you're thinking, wow, they're coming in and playing video games. Well, they're not playing it for fun a lot of times. I know it sounds like they're not. They're going in and they're practicing core like fundamentals, which usually are still boring. It's like practicing a free throw every time. You don't want to practice. You want to do like cool stuff, right? When you're playing basketball. So they're doing the drills that normally a normal person playing a video game wouldn't do because they want to master that aspect of their, their skill. And so it's like I said, all credit to them. It's hard for, I know it's hard, but the fact that you guys accept it without really knowing, but the fact that you went in saying, hey, let's do this is again, all the more appreciative to you guys and what you do for us. And just like I said, I know they're all grateful for everything you've done for us because it was just an amazing year and we're just looking forward to the future of Norwell Esports.
When did your season start?
It started in.
January.
Yeah, Jan- well, January was the official, like we were in like varsity competition. We were in a kind of probation period in fall. So we started in September in fall. So it's a full year. So you go from September to May is when it ends basically. So end of, well, end of April, beginning of May. But yeah, it's a full year sport. So they've been doing this, playing and working on their standings and things like that for an entire year.
How often do you have practice?
Uh, depends a lot of times. We have to limit it because a lot of them try and get in and practice every day. But we do open the lab Monday through Friday until five o'clock during the season. So we always have it. Right now, I even have it open after the season for all of them to still go in and play till four. So even though the season's over, that's what makes it amazing that I love playing video games because I can play with them, you know, some things like that. So it doesn't feel like practice after the season ends. It just feels like we're having fun and, you know, learning new things and I'm learning things from them because I don't play every video game. I am a gamer, but not like all the games they play. So I take opportunities to learn what they know because at the end of the day, I'm more like I say, a manager and they kind of self-coach, which is also a skill. They know how to form these strategies and communicate and determine what the best course of action forward. They understood what they needed to do against Bluffton, right? The two-year state champs. They went in and they did what they needed to. And so like I said, it's just an amazing opportunity for these kids to showcase those skills that maybe got overlooked because we never had something like this for them.
Congrats.
Thank you.
If you guys want to come on up and take a picture.
Okay. Apologize, I forgot the state championship trophies. I'll bring those. But luckily Bryce, like I said, they are more prepared than me. You brought his state championship. You're going to be facing that, you guys.
Yeah, so come up, come up here.
Up by the table.
Okay, okay.
We want to.
Hope I didn't talk too much.
The board also showing it said like the goal.
Yeah, we're trying to get by speed, you guys.
She'll tell you where to stand if you need to move.
Hey, guys.
Oh, okay.
Coaches in too.
Come on.
Here, come in closer.
There you go.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Good job.
Awesome. Thank you so much, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Awesome. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Like I said, we hope to make you guys proud.
My son wants my award.
Hey, what, have him come. We need Martin for plays.
He's, he's on time.
We're excited. Thank you. All right. Is it okay if these guys?
Yes.
All right, guys.
You guys are more than welcome to stay, but we understand if you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we will move on to the consent agenda with the exception of the personnel report.
Yeah, so give me a second here because I'm just connected. Okay. So you do have in consent agenda, you have your minutes from April 22nd meeting. Your claims are in there. We do have a donation, $700 from Park Community Church for food night lunches and then an overnight trip to approve a high school cheer, DU, C A camp at Bowling Green University. That's July 21st through the 24th. So if you'd want to first approve those consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second. Have a motion and a second and questions on the board? Done, right hand. And we'll move on to the personnel report.
All right. So the personnel report, we have a MLA leave for Erica Scott, teacher that is effective April 29th this year. And then leave of absence Travis Tackett, must driver, effective May 5th. No retirements, resignations, Kirsten Ellie, these are all effective at the end of the school year. Sage Beckett, Amanda Parkhill, Elizabeth Mann and Heather Bradley. Recommendations Tiffany Ritter, second shift custodian, effective May 14th. And then Avery Arms, fifth grade teacher, OES, starting next school year. Shane Newenswander, criminal justice teacher, starting next school year. Eric Boltemeyer, chemistry teacher, starting next school year. And I have to say, Eric is the reigning teacher of the year for East Allen Community Schools. So we're excited to have Eric join us. Lily Lovell is AM preschool teacher Lancaster for next year. Emily Buzzard. And these are all, these next few are for the summer's I read summer school. So that starts May 27th. Emily Buzzard, Lynette Freiger, Anna, or Hannah Housen, Rachel McBride, Kristen Prater, Nicole Burt, Angie Duncan, Rachel Eckert, Monica Huffman, Janelle Valenti, Anna Whitstone and Kaylee Till. And then for next year, Mackenzie Morgan, special education teaching assistant. Elizabeth Stoller, boys assistant golf coach, Damon Cullenbeck, boys assistant tennis coach, Nevada, Lenwell, girls softball volunteer assistant coach, and then Ella Krug, substitute teacher.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a motion?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any, any questions? All right. All those in favor, right hand. All those against, all those abstaining.
All right, superintendent's report. I asked Raina, assistant, to come forward. Just wanted to take an opportunity. She had some, just not necessarily recommendations, but just letting me know in terms of what the lunch prices will be for next year. And so we'll talk about that a little bit and then just kind of the vendors recommendations for those.
So again, these will be the lunch prices for next year is what I'm recommending. We are not raising lunch prices at all. This is the sixth year we've been able to hold steady. Now, the first two years were COVID, where they ended up giving us free meals for all children for universal meals those first two years. But because of our healthy budget, our, our healthy operating fund, we haven't needed to raise those prices. And we, I really love being able to keep that price under $3 for families. So we're really fortunate here, I think, with the team that I have and some of the other processes that we've done to, to be able to keep those steady for the next year.
And just to jump in quick, so this will be part of the student handbook. Can you approve those? That'll be part of that.
Just, we're gonna approval or notification that we are with our, staying with our food to school co-op and they have renewed the bid with our HPS. That's our purchasing group as well as with Gordon's Food Service and Commercial Food Systems. We are going to be switching milk vendors. We went with the Dairy Farmers of America over Prairie Farms, who we were currently utilizing. Dairy Farmers of America has brought in the bid at much lower. I did the math for, just really quickly, at one school, for the month of April, the difference at our high school would have been $300 savings. So, and they all serve about the same amount of milk. So, so I, I feel like it could be a really great way there again to keep our costs, to reduce our cost so that we can keep passing that on to our families.
Where is Dairy Farms located?
They're in Huntington. Yeah. Actually, a couple of weeks ago, I went over and toured it. They had a tour for us. We did a plant tour. If you've never been through a milk plant, it's quite interesting. You watch them blow the, the milk jugs from the plastic and they, we watched trucks come in and then test it. It was, it was really eye-opening to see that, where our milk comes from.
I just want to make sure we're still staying. I know where they were, but no Prairie Farms.
Yeah. Yeah. They're actually even closer. So.
Have you really been there six years?
Yes, I'm getting ready to start my sixth year. Yeah, I know. Is that better to?
I would have guessed two.
Yeah. It's gone fast. Yeah.
I feel like you now.
Well, I just, so with all this stuff that, you know, that Raina's doing with managing this, and one of the, one of the pushes you've noticed, and she's also trying to market and make the cafeterias look better. And I just wanted, Anna had a conversation with a, I think it was a high school student or high school parent.
Yeah, it was a parent and the parent was talking about the lunches and she says, it looks like a, like a college. It feels like a college when you walk in there. It just feels so, so good. She said, but the main thing that she said to me was, the ladies are so nice. All the ladies are so nice. And I passed that along to Raina. I was like, that says something because sometimes, you know, when you have a job, you, you may not are maybe nice, but the ladies are so nice. So that's, that's great. How they remind, you know, someone, hey, make sure you get, you, you have an extra apple. You can get, go ahead and grab that, you know, but they're just so nice and they love how it looks. And I've been out there and it just looks, and very inviting for school food, very inviting. It just looks like a, a college. So.
And our managers, Raina and our managers have worked hard. They've created that environment at their cafeterias and we just really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I still got another hour.
Totally. She hadn't been up in an hour.
Okay, yeah. So this is something that a couple of board members had asked to just kind of share and, and we'll record out, but it has to do with the extracurricular out-of-pocket. So I can go through and go through the different slides here to talk about what's kind of happening at each ECA. And then we can talk more about it if you have a direction that you would like me to, to share with our administrative team or any actions, we can, we can do that. But just sharing this out. So, so first page, I tried to group things together. So this is our, you know, more of our music department. So choir, marching band, winter guard, percussion, that sort of thing. And just kind of what the out-of-pocket, after we're doing other things with kids, what are the out-of-pocket? And these are things like just probably, you know, extra uniforms, that kind of stuff. And obviously with show pairs, there's a lot of competition stuff. But, and then this is mostly middle school here. So you have, you know, all the middle school activities. And then you can see high school cheer. I mean, that's a pretty high number as those of you know that are involved in that. And the rest of the numbers.
We need to get esports on there, Tommy. Is that all of them?
And then, yeah.
That's only the ones that charge.
Oh, okay. So this is just, so we can break this up. The first part, if you guys want to talk about extracurricular, out-of-pocket, any, making comments you have on that or anything you want to share.
The, the reason I asked for this is because I've taken calls from people just saying how much they were paying. So I, my suggestion is that we continue to keep this yearly so that if my kid wants to do cheerleading and I know they would be a new participant, that I know approximately what's going to have to come out of pocket because this is, this is not school paying for this stuff. This is what comes out of pocket. And I know, you know, some of them may not be all the way correct, but if we just keep this as a guide, that way if someone says, I just signed up for wrestling and it's $700, it's like, well, no, it's not. And if it is, you know, we can adjust it. The other, my other thought on this was, at one point I had heard that the, the football team got new uniforms and they were purchased by the football club. And so I think we need to start having a discussion as, as a board and as a community of, you know, I, I think you think the same, like a uniform, a basic uniform should be provided by the school. Now, if you want to do the special Mother's Day pink uniform for the baseball team, maybe that's something purchased by the clubs. But I think that there's some areas that we can probably, the school can take on that frees up those clubs, you know, to do some other things. And then just being completely transparent, that, the, the, the band choir, show choir stuff, those numbers hurt to look at. And so I don't, I'm not in that community per se. Like I don't have any children that participate, but that seems like a hindrance to me to have, because I know it's a point of, we're trying to, you know, help out with those extracurriculars. So there's got to be something there that we can do to either reduce the costs or help out a little bit more. Cause I know that they also do a ton of fundraising and all that. So that was an impetus behind it because I, I think it would be fair as a, to show the parents like, hey, your kid wants to sign up for these three extracurriculars. This is what you should expect.
Yeah. Well, and then one thing I would add, and I don't want to keep another board member from making a comment, but just on this part, if you remember, we're at the high school, I can't remember how many meetings ago this was, but we had, I'm blanking her name, I can see her face, representative from the band.
Yeah.
Boosters. Anyway. Anyway, and so one of the pushes for us has been that, again, just want to restate this, which is important, I think, with the board, is we make decisions on budgets and how we're doing stuff. Like, our, our boosters should never be paying for capital-type stuff, you know, and I appreciate, I mean, just something that wasn't here, if I look and I see all that, whether it was the, you know, softball club, or the baseball club, or whatever, you know, building buildings, putting up nets, and doing that stuff that are facility-type things, like, we should be taking care of that, that's, that's things that we ought to be doing with operations, through bonds, or whatever else that we're doing, and we need to free up, you know, our boosters and clubs to do the extra stuff, that some parents don't have to pay for that. But I would agree, you know, out of our gate, or whatever, um, things that we're doing within our athletic department, uniforms ought to be coming out of that, and that's the extra stuff. So I don't, so I'm not, I hadn't heard that before, that our, that a booster's bought.
Yeah, I can verify that, unless someone was on the team, but that's, I had heard that, and it just didn't sit right.
Yeah, so, but anyway, but that's, that's just like a global, you know, like a, like a bigger picture type thing is, is what we need to make sure that we're doing, that we're not ever asking our, our swim boosters or whatever to, to do facility work, like, that ought to be on us.
I think most of these numbers should also come with an asterisk beside it.
These are starting points.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just given the numbers, like, I don't know, I didn't.
I can speak personally on two, I'm like, hmm.
So you know they're higher than this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, and that's why I think it, it can be a working document, like, this is a good starting point, and this is what's mandatory, this is what is suggested, you know, and this is what parents can buy, or whatever, but, because there's a couple on there that I know.
Can you give me an example?
Specifically, like, for baseball, yeah, that player pack is accurate. I would say, I mean, I, okay, NHL's baseball, hundred seventy-five, yeah, that's probably, if you didn't raise, like, offset your costs with your, with the fundraiser, yeah, that's what they, that's their basic pant, warm-up, and t-shirt, but that doesn't take into account their mitt, their bat.
Well, those things, to me, those things are parents, yeah, like.
But it's still required to play the game.
Well, yeah.
Right, but you own those.
If someone, if someone is in a position that can't, then we can work on that, I think.
Well, so what's the cheer one?
I mean, that one, sorry, flew me away, honestly, I'm sorry.
You saying it's higher than that, Kathy?
Returning, I mean, I'm already eight hundred and seventeen in as a returning participant, we haven't even started the summer, so. Well, camp is about five hundred dollars, and then we, we wear matching outfits to all of our practices, and we look good. I mean, and they're great cheer teams, like, they, they look good, they work hard. There's just a lot that goes into it, but, you know, that's not, we don't have our seasonal bows, we don't have shoes, we don't have tumbling, um, you know.
One, I, I believe swimming, I think, was twelve dollars or something, I think that's probably the cap.
Swimming is pretty much however much you want to pay for your.
Yeah, but I, one, I know you gotta get a suit, which, you know, is, can be expensive depending on what you pay, you know, so it's, it's likely more than that.
So we don't have, like, like, that's not, you don't order through, like, a uniform thing for swimming?
They do have a, they do have a uniform.
But you, it's not a.
But the, you can choose which, which one you want, there are different styles and price points.
Yeah, so I, so I think some of this, I mean, I, I don't know, and I know that's not what you're saying, like, we're not going to eliminate, you know, any cost, like, there's probably always going to be something, maybe. That good, that goes beyond the basic, depending on what we want to do, but again, I, I, that's why I think boosters, it's important that we don't, we don't stress boosters for things that they shouldn't be doing, and then.
So that they can help bring these.
So they can help bring these costs down, um, because, because I don't know, like, for cheer, I don't know what's driving that cost, like, is that, is that the team itself driving it, is that coming from, you know, like, athletic department is probably saying, "You have to do these things in order to compete in cheer," or is that coming from within, right, so there's also that piece, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, um, same with any other sport, like, is that something that we're feeling like we have to do, or is the athletic department saying, "You have to do this," and then come up with the money? Those are kind of two different things, too, like, if we're, as a team, saying, "We just want to do this," when no one's making us do it, right? But, anyway, but yeah, deeper so, is there any, other than just reporting this out, is there any direction you guys have for me to take to people that are, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then as you have the discussions with the people that are in charge of those sports, like, or, or extracurricular activities, like, hey, is there an area, any areas? Because I would imagine, I haven't, I haven't heard from anybody that hasn't participated, but I've heard from people that are participating that say, "Hey, this, this is expensive for us to do," and it's a sacrifice, which, you know, all of us make, but just, is there areas that either the school should be taking care of, or that you as the team, or the, the coach can?
Well, I think the big thing, too, and it's, this, I mean, and this can get where you start parsing out, and I don't, I really don't mean to do this at all, but like, we've been talking a lot here, um, just in presentation for the board, about how, just as a, as a school system, we want to build our, our performing arts with, you know, band and marching band and choir, and like, get it back to the place where it had been before, and we got some really good people in place right now, or that are trying to, you know, drive that. But you definitely don't want costs to be an indicator, as you're trying to build a program, yeah.
But I really think those should not be hard and fast numbers, like, it should be, these are estimated, because I would hate for somebody to say, "No, this is what this says, and I'm not paying anymore."
Right, right, and all I know is I asked people, tell me how much your, people are spending, and they, they gave me numbers, right?
Yeah, but I think there's a lot more to consider.
Do you see kids that can't afford some of this, and there's not any kids that are getting turned away, or?
I have no idea.
Well, and to your point, like, if there's, I'll say it publicly, if there are kids that can't afford cleats or bats, they need to go have that discussion with their, with their coach, and then, you know, with the athletic department, and if it gets, you know, higher up, then fine, we don't want people not to be able to participate.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, I'm only going to show choir, and I mean, some people, that may be a little rough. Then band, I mean, we, we question why our band is so small, and you just kind of look at the numbers, and it'd get pretty expensive in a year.
And band for sure doesn't include whatever your instrument is, if you have.
And I, and I would say that, that Norwell is probably not unique in this as well, right? So other places that are too, that have, you know, bands, or maybe even bigger bands, or whatever, they're probably paying this also, but as we're trying to build things, that may be the point, too, but, okay. All right, um, then the other piece of this, um, was asked, what are we looking at with facility rentals, I'm going to ask Adam Peckler to come up and, um, answer any questions you guys might have, but, and, and so, Adam really is, obviously, he's our facilities director, so he's really in charge of this, but even moving forward more, we were having kind of administrative discussion about this, and, you know, Adam take even more of a lead role in this, and making sure that we're streamlining the process, um, like, so we've got this, the process streamlined for onboarding, offboarding employees, field trips is more digital now. We need to get more with this, so far, we're still chasing paper when it comes to facility rentals, and I think we've got an idea how the, how to man that a little bit better, but, so these are numbers, you have any, any questions about?
Do you, Adam, have any concern, once you looked at this, is there concerns, things you want to adjust?
There, there might be some, like, rental fees that we might adjust, or with, you know, paying for custodians or cooks and stuff like that, but I haven't really got into the actual numbers of it yet, but it's, it's all pretty fair. I mean, I don't think we want to raise it so high that people can't afford to rent anything, um, so I think it's pretty fair.
Um, one of the questions that was posed to me was who checks, because I think for groups one, two, and three, if I remember correctly, they have to have a certain amount of people, who's, is anybody checking that?
I think the athletic department does that, that, so, right now, it goes to the athletic department, and they go through everything, and then they approve it all, and then send it to us. And so I think most of our athletic groups that rent the facility are, I know, the Aces are the ones that rent most of it, like softball, um, field, stuff like that, and I know that they're at least seventy percent over Norwell students.
Because that may be an opportunity of outreach as well, if we've got twenty percent of the Aces that are not on, or don't go to Norwell, we probably have their contact info and say, "Hey," so, that might be, I mean, I, I would like to make sure it is being checked, and then just make sure that we're.
So I can tell you as a building principal, and it was different in the district I was at, like, so we would approve facility rentals in our building, and, and we'd have to look, and so they, they would have to give me a roster, and so on that roster, they'd have to, and then they would, where are kids going to school and stuff, and so we would, that was part of it, so. I'm assuming that's what's being done, um, through the athletic department, but if it's not, we can make sure that that's being done, but yeah, when you look at it, it's all Aces, it's all kids that are.
And then I know you put in the email, or in the information about the police, and I'm completely fine.
Yeah, that's one place, I don't know really, we thought about this when we were going through and doing the groups, and for, I really think we, we were talking about this, and I just told Adam, just kind of look at it, and look at who's been doing it, and if he wants to make adjustments to the groups, make those adjustments. But, so we had, um, police, we're in group five, police, our local law enforcement groups, fire, fire, um, departments, and so on. And we technically had it in there that we're to be charging them for facilities. But when it played out, I mean, a lot of times it was just raining in our parking lot to do drills and stuff, but they have rented, like, the mezzanine up at the, at Ossian, to do some testing and things like that, actual paper and pencil testing. But, you know, they don't, when we ask them, "Hey, we need extra help, the bridge was out," or "This is during the street fair," or whatever, can you give it? They don't charge us, right, and so, um, I don't think we should be charging, so I think that's something that we'll make adjustments to. We didn't charge them, anyway.
I was just looking at that.
Yeah, we didn't, but on, but on the, but on the paper, on the actual, on our policy, and on our application that we're supposed to be, I'm glad we didn't, because we shouldn't have been.
I think anytime you have, you know, emergency personnel in your building, it's always a plus.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think you should, you know, police, medical, fire, I mean, anybody like that. Something happens in the building, if you know the building, the better off you are, so.
And the fire department showed up at Norwell, the middle school and high school, several times over the construction project. I've never seen a bill for that one.
Well, there you go.
And that's at all hours of the day, so it's not just your normal day shit that they show up, so.
So I think that can be some fine tuning.
All right, yeah.
Thanks. Okay, I didn't know then for board reports, if you and Cory wanted to share anything from the regional meeting?
Oh, shoot, I apologize, I should have brought the. I, I, I can start while you pull up whatever you're gonna do, we had the regional meeting, and, um, it, it's more of an encouragement, because, from my perspective, to get involved, yes, locally at school board meetings, but you need to call your representatives and senators, because I think they said they passed a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-four new bills, twenty-seven percent of which had to or touched school systems in some way, shape, or form, which is, that's what it is every year, and frankly, it's asinine, because it's really impossible to keep up with everything. The ones that affect us the most, or in my opinion, the most, um, is, is obviously the, the property tax, one, which I'm all for, less taxes, but the ramifications of not passing something that says, you know, the local officials now can't raise sales tax and stuff like that. So I, I don't, I don't know if it will be a property tax, or a tax savings overall, and then it does affect our budget. One that just bothers me from a personal perspective, because I think, as people, we all, we've all had conversations where, um, we say, like, "Hey, we are letting the government in every aspect of our lives," and I don't know what they're doing down in Indianapolis, or in Washington DC, but at some point, we have to take personal responsibility, and one of those that, that came up is now, school board elections, the next one, or beginning the next one, school board candidates will have to elect a, a party. And, in my opinion, of all places, politics should not be in school systems, and I get it. And it, from my perspective, I think that the reason that they're doing that is, is twofold, one, it makes it easy for you to not pay attention to your school board election, and be like, "Hey, I'm a Republican, I'm gonna go vote for whoever has R next to their name." It's, it should not be difficult to call up whoever is running, whether it's one of us five, or a different district, and ask them their opinion on things, and get, and take personal responsibility, so you know what's going on in your school systems and who you're voting for. So that makes me mad, because I know the founding fathers of, of this country did not want a two-party system, and that's what it's become, and if someone decides to be an independent, they're gonna be behind the eight ball, in my opinion, because people like to vote party lines. The other thing that that affects, which I think could have a bigger impact down the road, is, is if someone is a Republican, and then they step down, the Republican Party then gets to decide who the next school board member is. At this point in time, if someone steps down, the board interviews candidates from that district, and we, you know, make a collective decision, and so it only solidifies the, the party politics of, of Republican and Democrat, and so I, it doesn't sound like a big issue, and most people are probably like, "Yeah, not a big deal," but it's, we are not taking responsibility, which means things will happen that we don't have control over, and so people need to, like, I've called the IHSA not a, an elected position, so, just to be clear, but IHS about random things, and they don't, they don't hear enough, so they don't make the changes, you know, because getting in athletic events is absolutely ridiculous, what we pay sometimes for the regionals and sectionals and all that, and they're in charge of that, so we have to take responsibility for that, so those were my big takeaways, I know there's probably a couple other that you paid attention to.
Yeah, um, well, I think, uh, one of the big things that comes out of the spring conference, or the spring, um, regional meetings, is they recognize, uh, boards and board members. So they have, uh, the boards and board members receive points, um, for the, uh, it's called EGA, uh, exemplary governance award, um, and this year, uh, at the, um, spring regional meeting, uh, level one commendable, uh, Corey and Tracy were recognized. And, uh, for level three distinguished, um, I was recognized at that level, and I believe, um, I don't remember what we got last year, but, uh, the board received a level two advanced recognition uh, for the board's overall involvement in ISBA activities, and so, um, great association, uh, they host a lot of continuing education, um, opportunities, I think, uh, there's some on the, on the, uh, agenda coming up. But I certainly would encourage, um, everybody on the board to get involved, um, it's, uh, we do get points for being involved, and you also get recognized individually, so I'm very appreciative of a board for being involved, I know a lot of the points come from the fall conference, and, uh, you get points as well for attending a lot of the other things, and so, thanks to the board, thanks for the, uh, the, the dedication. We got two new board members, that's why they didn't get, uh, recognized, because they haven't had the chance, and these points are, are previous to their being on the board, so, um, that's why they obviously weren't recognized, and we still had that board recognition because of the previous board, uh, involvement, so. So just wanted to make sure we recognize those as well.
Very good. Next time with discussion, but we don't have any.
All right, moving on to actionizing revisions to the twenty-five, twenty-six support benefits, Manuel again?
Okay, so I'm gonna hand this over to Anna, she and Courtney led the process through this. Some of the changes, I'll just kind of tee up for her. So we went, they went through and made changes, obviously, they run it by me before I bring it here to, for recommendation for the board, but then the other thing we do is, once we run through that process and get it approved with the board, we also then go through and talk, we, Anna and I meet with, um, all the support staff, building support staff, above office, and then teaching assistants, talk to them just about how the year went, go over any changes, they sign their letters of assurance, if they're, offered a letter of reasonable assurance. And through that conversation, sometimes we see things that, "Oh, you know, we did miss this," or "They asked about this," and make some changes, so Anna's gonna share some of that.
So the, the first major changes up here listed, um, so with, with part-time employees, we had listed, um, not eligible for paid time off, um, and it was kind of brought to our attention, um, this is not including, you know, subs, this was including substitute teachers, employees, seasonal employees. We have employees, though, that work a hundred and eighty days, that are just four hours a day or so. So, we put, they, they work then half a day, so we put half the PTO days back in for those people that do work maybe four hours, six hours, something like that, so, um, that was something we added back in.
Can you talk again about why the eight and four, like, where those numbers come from?
Yep, so the state of Indiana has, um, our students are expected to attend school ninety-five percent of the time. So if our students are expected to attend school ninety-five percent of the time, employees should be better than that. So ninety-six percent of the time, that's where we came up with the eight days for the full-time employees and bus drivers, that's where we come up with those, those numbers. It's important to be here, um, and a lot of your, um, classified staff, there's, there's not a sub, so it's really. It's important to be here, and a lot of your classified staff, there's there's not a sub, so it's really important for you to be here for our kids. So that's where we come up with the eight and four, it's simple math.
Any questions on that?
So also with that, and you can go then to page seven, there was a, I I don't really know what happened with this one, but this one here, it's Public Employees Retirement Fund. This will be offered to any employee who works more than twenty hours a week. At some point in time, we had for year-round or full-time staff, but that is a change for any employee that works more than twenty hours a week. We will continue to contribute perf, which is a retirement. Also, then, finally, on the compensation page, which is going to be page nine, we would like at this point in time to have raises for our cafeteria managers. If they are zero to five, we'd like to do twenty-one, if they're six to ten, twenty-three, and ten plus, twenty-five. So that's a dollar an hour raise, and we would also like for our cooks to have a fifty cent raise to make them seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. We need for the people that are working for us part-time, our cooks, to be competitive with any place that's out there, you know, that's serving food. And so we'd like for them to work here instead of maybe a fast food place or something like that. Also, and we had added this the last time, if we have a cafeteria manager out, a cook that fills in for them, we'll get a two dollar an hour subbing extra.
And they do accept, that's right.
Yeah, so one one thing I would just say on on that, we, so we have made pretty big strides overall. When you look at all of these numbers here over the last, you know, few few years, what we have for support staff, I mean, it's been, it's been pretty significant jumps to where we feel like we're really competitive around every district. For right now, just because of kind of what Corey referenced, and it doesn't mean that we couldn't make adjustments during the year. Right now, we just don't know, right, the impact that we're going to see. We think probably in operation fund, we're looking about about eight hundred thousand dollars less in revenue than what we've had previous year, so that's, so we've got to be a little bit careful, I mean, we're all about making sure that all of our employee groups are at the top when we look around the area of everybody, whether that's teachers, teaching assistants, bus drivers, custodians, whatever it might be, like, we want that to be really competitive. I think we're kind of a little bit in somewhat of a holding pattern right now till we kind of see how this plays out. The thing about food services, that's self-sustaining, and the things that Rain has talked about, you know, making smart decisions with different vendors and able to recoup some of that money, that makes it a little bit easier to do these things that are not impacted by what we're seeing in in property tax cuts or, you know, cutting revenue, so that makes that a little bit different. But I guess I just want every employee group to hear that, like, we do feel like we've made big strides to make sure we're really competitive in every area. We always want to be pushing the envelope on that, we're going to have to just be a little bit careful, I think, this next year till we really see how this thing plays out. Well, that makes sense.
Did we modify some of the language related to the insurance? I know it got changed, and there was some confusion about it last time, did it get kind of cleared up?
So are we talking this one here with spouses, that one?
It looked like that changed again.
I I don't think it did, I don't know, I don't think it was ever not read.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it changed.
Is that what we changed it to last time?
Yes.
That just seemed different.
I mean, it includes Tracy, so that they don't have to collect that up, and so I think that looks correct.
It just seemed like it read a little bit slightly different, like, it made more sense, but maybe that's.
This makes more sense?
I think it is different.
Yeah, it made me different, so.
It said they had to, the high deductible.
Right, so they're not required.
They're not required to, they may choose it, yes.
Now, to be quite honest, like, so we had a conversation with somebody kind of in that situation, they're more than welcome to do that. It honestly doesn't really make sense, because the what you would be paying extra in premium, what we had advised them to do, since you're doing the high deductible plan, you can do an HSA, put it in an HSA. Then if you end up having to pay more in deductible, use your HSA to pay the extra that you're paying in the deductible. So it honestly doesn't make sense for someone to choose that, which is probably why we had it the way it was, but you're welcome to, if you want to. We would probably advise you, that doesn't make a lot of sense, because now you can do an HSA, which you couldn't do in a network deductible plan, so.
So is that last sentence?
Yeah. Any other questions regarding the revisions? Bill, do you have a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions, any questions of the audience? Hearing none, or in favor right-hand?
All right.
Maybe not the resolution to expand first.
Yeah, so you you actually approved this as an action item, I don't know if that was a couple board meetings ago in April. We thought that's all you needed to do, Jeff got clarification, and if she's going to speak, I'll ask her to come up here, but I don't know she's going to need to. I don't know if she'll need to, but um, but yeah, anyway, so so they had, they said you actually have to have a board resolution to do it. So it's a, it's the same, like, all of it in there, just fills in the gaps, but basically, the important part is appendix A, where we're adding adjunct teachers and occupational therapists to the, to be eligible for the for perf.
So that includes any employee now?
Yes.
Right.
I feel like it'd be easier to just be like, who's in that?
Right, 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 but so we just had to, we were, had to have a resolution to add them. Like I said, you already, you already did an action item, we thought that was good enough, and they said, no, you actually need to do a resolution, so.
And that's because adjunct teachers are recognized as a certified.
Correct.
So they would be under the regular perf and not the teachers. A motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say, I have a motion and a second, any questions of the board, any questions of the audience? Hearing none, make a motion or have a right-hand.
All right, just wanted to go over some calendar events for you all. May twenty-second, last last Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, there's a regular board meeting here again at the admin building. June first, we have our graduation, and then June fourth, we have a board work session here, the Stifel Financial, and really to go through projections and and try to get a little bit more clarity to exactly like, what what is the impact of Senator Roll Act? What does that look like for Norwell? I will say Norwell is in better shape than a lot, because even though we've done a lot of things here, our our debt service rate is is low compared to a lot, so we're not as impacted by it. But they're going to be here to talk about that and give some advice to the board on on kind of what they think Norwell ought to be moving forward and have that discussion. And then June thirteenth, ISBA Law Seminar, going back to what Chad said earlier, you were informed points as board members, and it's a pretty good seminar, the the budget one also is coming up later in June, but I don't know if you want to talk about any of that, Chad?
Yeah, I've not been to the law seminar, it's the only one I've not attended, the budget one is it's been really pretty good. They've done some on school safety, AI in school, actually, the AI in school one is really good. And the school safety has some pretty interesting topics as well, so again, for any of the board members, if you're if you're able to attend, I would highly encourage you to attend, they are great sessions, great learning opportunities, and just let us know if you're interested, and if there's more of us, we can carpool down, so. Anything from the board? The only thing I would say is, we're almost there, and we're not done yet, and, you know, best of luck to the last little over a week of school to to both students and staff, and I know you're all looking forward to summer. We are, Jerry.